Scott Tillman, how are you, sir?
Very good. How are you doing?
I am doing swimmingly. Thank you for coming today. You are running for city council of Caldwell, correct? All right, fantastic. Talk to me about why you're running, what you do in the community already, the whole bit.
Okay. Well, this actually all started almost four years ago. So, good friend of mine who ran for senate, we were talking and I was trying to support him. After we talked for a while, he was like, oh, you, we could really use you on city council. What you know would be really, really good. I'm a, I do civil structural engineering work. I'm a drafter.
Gotcha.
So I draw lines all day and I basically take engineers nightmares and try to make them so the guys out in the field can do what they need to do.
Right.
It's called, in our line of work, it's called detailing, because I look at the details. So because of that, he was like, yeah, we could really use somebody like you on council. So I started thinking about it, prayed about it a little bit, talked to the wife, started going to city council meetings. We started looking into it and noticed that, yeah, there was some deficiency on the council of people that just, not that they're wrong or anything, just they didn't know what they were talking about. Things would come up from developers or builders or anything else. There was questions that were being asked or not being asked. And I'm sitting out in the crowd going, come on, I want to, you know, I wish I could just jump up and yell and say, no, you need to ask this question. Everybody is saying, oh, growth, it's bad and, you know, we need to stop it. I ran two years ago. And I was still kind of new and did fairly well, only missed by 3%, 147 votes to the head of Caldwell Housing Authority, which was a known name, didn't think I did too bad. But in the interim, I got to really start knowing people and I'm on public record. I was testifying going, this is what we need to do. Do I think we need to slow some of it down? Yeah. I think a lot of it is being, it, we're playing catch up. If you look at it from the 08 downturn to about 14, 2014, nothing was built. Nothing new was cut in. There was a lot of land that was annexed, but nothing was done. So now you hit COVID, everybody can move. Everybody can, you know, say, hey, I don't want to live here anymore. I want to live somebody or somewhere else that's cheaper. Well, Idaho was really attractive. We got a lot of people who moved in. We had no inventory in housing. So you had an artificial inflation of housing numbers. My house doubled inside of two years. And that's just because we had no inventory and people were walking in paying cash. So now all of a sudden, a boom in building, eh, all these pieces of land that were annexed are now building out. Right? Tons of new building going on, trying to play catch up on inventory. In the process, we went through a bunch of years of double digit inflation normally, just nationwide, and that was from COVID as well. So then the base price caught up with the inflated price. So now I built my house in 2014 for a hundred bucks a square foot. You can't even touch a house right now for under about 210.
Oh, yeah. I have a friend who's building out in Middleton and she said it's like over 300 easy.
And I'm just talking bare bone minimum.
Right. Absolute base.
Absolute base. Nothing fancy, nothing over the top, just absolute minimum. So it's doubled, period. And that's just in concrete costs, wood costs, labor, all of that.
I got, I'm sorry to interrupt. I got, I built, I recently built a wrestling loft. I have a, like a shop barn, right? And so instead of taking up the ground floor, I was like, okay, high enough ceilings, you know, 15 foot ceilings. I'm like, all right, look, why don't I make a loft and I'll build, you know, I'll do a 500 square foot platform and then I'll have 400 square feet of wrestling mats, jujitsu mats up there. No problem. So I do it. I'm like, okay, great. You know, you're like, I'm handy, like good in construction, but dude, just one sheet of three quarter inch ply. One sheet, I was like 50 to 60 bucks for a sheet of plywood?
Yep.
I, I was blown away.
How do you build? And everybody keeps using these, what I call political terms. You know, well, we need more affordable housing. Well, what's affordable? What's affordable to you may not be affordable to me. We need to look at what we're building. So in Caldwell right now, we're building mainly either pack them in apartments or single family homes. But where's the middle ground? So.
What's the middle, what's the middle ground in your mind?
First of all, owner occupy, we, we're, all the back of men stuff, the big heavy multi families are all rentals. I want people who have skin in the game. And what I mean by that is when you're renting, all you see is your rent cost.
Sure.
When you own, you see your taxes. You start seeing what everything's going, you know, where things are, where you're spending your money, where your money's being used. It ties you tighter to the local scene.
Yeah.
My son, for example, he just got out of the Navy. He was just discharged in last year, medically discharged. He broke his back. Okay.
Sorry to hear that.
Oh, and he's good with it and can still get around, but he came back and wants to live here. Now, this is a guy who could get every VA benefit you can imagine.
Sure.
He'd love to own a home, but he doesn't want to rent. And he can't mow a lawn. He can't take care of, you know, my generation, probably your generation. We wanted the little house with the white picket fence and the yard.
Love that.
The more and more I'm talking to people, Gen Xers are, yeah, some want that. Some want a duplex or a townhome or condos. Right? Something smaller. My first, when I was 19, the first thing I ever bought was an upstairs unit, 650 square foot condo. One bedroom, one bath. That was a huge place. And for me, I could afford it. It was great. That was my first foyer into real estate. I actually owned something.
At 19?
At 19.
Man, that's awesome.
I actually moved up here in 98, so I'm a drafter by trade. I do civil structural engineering.
Sure, sure, sure.
I owned my own business for 16 years. So I did, worked with engineers across the country, doing different, you know, projects. I did the big, did bridge work on the big dig, big dig in Boston. Retaining walls in Louisville, Kentucky, all kinds of things. So used to travel around, do field service work, things like that. My avocation is I'm an ice hockey official, since retired, but I moved up here when the steelheads came in, because I came up here for a game back in the late 90s. They said they were looking for local linesmen, came up, did a game, moved two months later.
Look at you.
We ended up.
Sold.
Yeah. No, no, I loved it. Now, I mean, I was born in Salt Lake, moved to San Jose, California when I was four. My dad was, right after he got out of the military from Vietnam, they had me. My brother was four years older than me, but when I was four, with computer companies, we moved to California. Moved to Hong Kong when I was 12, Singapore when I was 16. I graduated in 88 when I was 18. We then moved to Bangkok Thai, or my parents moved to Bangkok, Thailand. They moved me back here, dropped me off.
Like, here you go, son.
Yep.
Have at it.
And so the sharks had come in. I had learned to skate when I was in Salt Lake.
Yeah, yeah.
And they needed pylons and I started working out and started officiating and went down that road. Well, when the steelheads came in, I was already working West Coast Hockey League games. Fresno, down in LA, all that.
Sure.
So I came up here with that. Plus I had my own business, didn't matter. I was doing the whole remote thing before it was cool. Right? So I didn't really care. I was at, I ended up with three acres out in West Caldwell. So I had nice piece of land. Well, after I retired and everything else, and I did end up in a divorce back in 07, by 08, everything kind of collapsed. Lost the house, had to move into the city. Since then, I've gotten remarried. My two kids have grown up. They were born in Caldwell, raised, moved out. My new wife, she was born and raised in Nampa. We've been married since 09. So, you know, we've been married, what, 16 years? And.
Man, you gotta really like somebody to be married in the middle of the recession.
Yeah.
Cause you're not, you don't like it.
It wasn't about the money.
It wasn't about the money. You gotta actually like just drinking home brewed coffee and staring at each other.
And so, you know, we've been through the worst times together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A lot better.
So if I may ask, and just they kind of circling back a little bit to what you're saying, it's like, it sounds like you're saying, okay, apartments, just mass apartments versus just big, single family homes. There's a middle ground where you can attain homeownership, but you don't necessarily have to have like the half acre grass and everything. There's a world where you can have homeownership, be it a condo, a townhouse, a duplex or something that are more attainable. Cause again, I'm not saying affordable housing, but attainable where it's, you know, you and I both jumped in earlier in life. I wasn't 19 or anything, but you, you know, you get that starter spot.
Right.
And if the only housing stock is like, okay, you gotta get a three bedroom, two bath with like at least a quarter an acre. And that's the lowest you can get. You're going to prevent a lot of younger people from engaging in that first step of homeownership.
When your, when your bottom end is 400,000 for a home, right? Three to 400,000, most kids can't afford that.
Right.
Our wages can't afford that right now.
Right.
That's just the reality.
So you gotta have something, the 200 to 250.
In the middle. The other thing is this too. I had three acres. So this is kind of where I was going. Why am I going for city council? I know civil engineering. I know what infrastructure actually is, what it takes to make roads, what it takes to buy the land. Everyone says, well, we need to widen the roads. Okay. Well, we gotta buy that land. Who's gonna buy it?
Yeah, right.
Who's gonna widen it? Well, growth should pay for itself. Okay. Yeah. But we have to have the growth before it can pay for itself. I sit on the impact fee committee for Caldwell. So I know what we're charging. What law says that we can actually do. It says we have to, you know, have a capital improvement plan. In other words, where do we have deficiencies? And if this was to come in, it now shows that this road's deficient, so we can charge them an impact fee to help fix this road. But if we already do the roads ahead of time, then there's no deficiency. Now I can't charge them impact fees and now growth doesn't pay for itself.
And if I, first off, that's, I did not know that. So thank you for that. One of the other things that people run into, and you see this in Star and Middleton and other places as well, where people say, hey, I don't want, like Star classically, at Star Middleton Fire District has this huge wrinkle where they had enough money from impact fees to build a new firehouse.
No way to staff it.
Right. And people always say growth should pay for growth, but what the, what I find interesting is if you take any property tax in Star from 2020 and you compare that property tax to right now, 2025, your property tax is less now than it was in 2020 because they've doubled in size. Now, the, the, the actual, because of House Bill 389, the actual budget has only been able to increase, I think something like 42%, but you have double the population of Star. And because of that, you have a decreasing in property tax. So you have twice as many people paying for only 40% more of the cost.
Correct.
And so it's almost like growth.
And those are year to year costs. Now capital's different. Impact fees can only go to one time fees.
Right, exactly. And you can't.
So I can build the, I can build the fire station, but I can't use those fees to pay for the firefighter because they're not reoccurring.
Right. And the idea that the developer should be on the hook indefinitely for salaries. It's like, that doesn't work. But it's, I find it so funny.
Anti-capitalistic.
Right. And there's no way, like you can't have an indentured, like I want to build a house, fine, but you're going to fund this forever, right? The problem that you run into, if you took the, if you took the Star property taxes, the buildings that existed in Star and in 2020, and you kept their tax base, you kept their tax bill, the exact same, Star would have plenty of money. But because you've had, because of the way the tax structure is structured, you've had a drop in property tax and now people don't want to bring it back up.
But here's the other.
And I don't live in Star, like they get to decide whatever they want to do.
And we have the same issue in Caldwell, but yes, we're now the fourth largest city in the state. Fourth per compass population. So we're between 70, 80, 70 and 80,000 people.
Yeah.
Right? It's insane. Now, we have plenty of rooftops. But the problem is your low density, stuff like that. First of all, it develops sprawl. This is where I was going. You have to annex more property because you're putting fewer rooftops per acre.
Right.
But I'm not into the pack them in stuff either. There needs to be that middle ground. I want to protect our farmland. Well, how do you do that? Stop annexing stuff. We have a ton of land. My house backs up to, I want to say it's just under a hundred acres. One last plot that's in the area. It was annexed in 04, 05. It's been platted four times. It's never been built. What is? That is in the city. And if that comes before city council, under the codes and under the law, basically council has to go, does it meet all the codes?
Right.
It's all checkboxes.
Right.
If it does, it's really hard to say no. It's much easier to say, no, we don't want to in the city right now. I can stop annexing. And then start looking at our infill, stuff that's already been annexed. What can we do with it to help long term? Now, one of the biggest issues is.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Let's use this hypothetical 100 acres.
Okay.
Now let's say it wasn't annexed in 04.
Okay.
If they, if that person wants to sell it to a developer, that person could do that. And then the developer.
Has every right to. That's a property rights issue.
And then that developer would go to the county and say, we would like to build X, Y, and Z. And then that, since they're in unincorporated Canyon County, the county determines, okay, does this check the boxes or not? But whether they annex in, whether they, Caldwell annexes in that 100 acres or not, there's still a path forward to development. So that farmland is on the chopping block, one way or another.
Correct. But here becomes the issue. Developers, if you're in the county, do they have water supply? Do they have sewer?
Hmm. You need the water rights.
Well, no, no, the water rights come with it, but now here becomes the issue. Do you really want to sink a well? Do you want to rely on wells? Do you want to relay on leach fields like I had when I owned three acres out in West Canyon? Or West Caldwell?
Do you want to do a sewer?
Am I doing a hundred acres of subdivision? That's all on individual wells and all on, no, they want to tie into the city. Especially when you're surrounded by city.
Gotcha.
Right? So any developer, the costs of wells and everything, it's just not cost effective.
Right.
So you can hold off some of that. And I'm talking about the sprawl, not if you're actually surrounded, but if the sprawl.
Gotcha. Okay. That makes perfect sense.
We can protect some of that. The other thing is we don't need to, you know, Rick Hogabom was in here and I love Rick. Rick and I talk quite a bit and I'm an elections chief judge. So I run election polling places in Canyon County. So he's actually my boss sometimes.
Back up. You're an elections chief judge.
Correct.
What does that mean?
Okay. I'm, I'm basically the one that runs the polling location on election day. So wherever your polling location is, the person who's kind of at, in charge of that team that puts on that election in that location, they're the chief judge.
So that's you.
That would be me.
Man, I, I love that. What do you think of Idaho's election system?
I think it's actually one of the better ones. They own, there are a couple of things. Since COVID, we opened up absentee ballot. Right? Absentee voting?
Yes.
I wish we'd crank that back in.
And who would that be available for?
People like my kid overseas. I lived overseas. My parents had to apply for absentee ballots. It should be restricted. Okay. You have to have a reason, not just because I want to sit at home. That's where fraud starts to come in because, okay, how many people don't actually live where they're, they say they live? Or I've run into this a couple of times. How can you vote in two different counties? Well, you buy a house in Canyon County and the husband is the name on that one. You buy a house up in McCall or something and put your wife's head on that one. And now you can claim both of them as your primary residency.
Yeah. But how many people own two houses?
No, no, but I'm just saying.
That's a pretty small.
I'm just saying, there's people who have done it and I've seen it. It's rare, but it's not a big deal. My response is, is that absentee is where you're, if you're going to have a lot of fraud, that's where it's at.
With people not living where they.
Or just, or ballots showing up and people filling them out and sending them in and.
But they have to request an absentee ballot, right?
Correct.
So you have to be a registered voter.
And request.
And request. So they're not, they don't just show up.
Right now, I can request for the whole year. Back when we had four elections a year, I could get all four elections. I could request in January and get all four elections. We only have two a year now. But back when we had four, perfect example, my mother-in-law, she was in assisted living. We applied for absentee balloting for her, right? Well, a year and a half ago in May, she passed away. Well, let's say that she had passed away right after the May election. She'd gotten her May ballot. Well, three more ballots are automatically going to show up.
That's if they don't update the voter roll.
Like I said, this is where it starts to get, you're relying on government, which is notoriously bad for communicating with each other. We have that problem in Caldwell. County doesn't want to talk to the city. The city doesn't want to talk to the state, whatever. I've seen all kinds of things happen.
Sure.
We do a fairly good job in Canyon County. But there's always things that fall through the, may fall through the cracks because you're still dealing with Secretary of State. So it goes, you know what I mean? There's a lot of communication that goes back and forth, a lot of things that happen. I just like to see it tightened up. I'm not saying get rid of it. I'm saying tighten it up to where you have to have a reason. Why do I really need it? Well, I'm out of the, I'm in the military. I'm out of the country. I'm in assisted living. I'm in, we're not asking for a lot. I'm just saying minor things.
Gotcha. So you just feel like there should be, and again, I, I don't think you're unique in this opinion, but you feel that there should be a reason to validate, like before anybody can get absentee voting, they, they should have a reason. And then the government determines, is this a valid reason for you to get a mail, an absentee ballot or not?
One of the things I've realized, so this is now my second time running for an office, same office, but.
Sure.
Oh my gosh, mail is expensive. And stamps, it doesn't sound like a lot, 50 cents, 40 cents for a postcard, but when you're sending out.
A hundred thousand.
Eighty five hundred of them.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Eight thousand. It starts to add up into the thousands of dollars. Well, imagine what a city or a county costs to send things out. Even if you're only spending 30 cents a piece, you know, you're at 30, 40, $50,000 to send out stuff. We, why are we sending out all these ballots? That costs the county money.
Well, elections in general cost money, right?
But this is my other thing. Do you realize we have two weeks of early voting? It's not even election day anymore. It's election month. Between absentee ballots, early voting, everything else. I mean, there isn't an election day anymore. It's just, this is kind of the last hurrah day.
The last hurrah day?
Well, think about it, two weeks prior. I mean, and that costs, that costs counties, that costs a lot of money to run that. And this is where people are always saying, where can we cut taxes? Why am I paying so much? Things like this. You don't even think about it, but I have people all the time, well, why didn't the city tell everybody what was going on? They should send out a mailer for everybody. Okay. Do you realize that if every little thing that happened, they had to send out a mailer? Oh my God, your taxes would double overnight.
Yeah, right. Just in postage, let alone ink and paper and blah, blah, blah.
Oh.
Each, each of the political mailers, somebody told me that the political mailers cost something between like five and $10,000 every mailer. And then you think about how many mailers you get in a big election, you have a stack this big. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to fire that stuff up.
People always tell me, we want the money out of politics. Uh, great. Tell the federal government to allow me to mail stuff for free.
Right.
Because this isn't even, I mean, it's just purely postage. I can do the printing cheap, but.
Look, but my apologies. I, I did not know. Yeah, no, no. I, I thank you for what you do for the voting system, you know? And I, I actually will, I do a lot of interviews on the voting system. I will find out, uh, because I know the voter rolls get scrubbed constantly. So you have death certificates in.
And, and I'm not saying they don't, but it's just one of those where when people start questioning, this is one of the places we could tighten it up.
Gotcha.
Do I think it's a massive problem? No, I don't. I mean, we have a really good system here in Idaho. I think we have, it can always be better.
Sure.
But.
Yeah. And they're prosecuting some people that engaged in.
Some of it.
Yeah. And again, not a ton of people, but they're prosecuting.
Right. And people will sit there and go, yeah, but that's probably, okay, we're talking less than 1%.
Oh, a tiny, tiny.
Tiny, tiny, tiny percentage. But you can always clean it up. You can always do things better. So that's what, when you ask, that's where I'm kind of going. Yeah. Could we do things better? Yeah, always.
And again, I apologize. You, you brought up Rick Hogabom, who's running for Nampa mayor. I'm sorry. I totally derailed.
Well, no, no, but like he said, you know, when you look at the numbers.
Right.
High density will always pay for itself long-term because you're putting more people, smaller area, you have less roads that need to go to that area. You have less sewer that needs to go to that area, all your services, all of that. Low density where you're spread out, you have more roads, more sewer, more all that. So your services are higher. They don't pay for themselves long-term.
Right.
But you need both.
Right.
So where's the balance? Well, the funny thing is the balance is actually in commercial. Because if you look at the impact commercial has, commercial only impacts your city services 20 to 30%. Where residential is 70 to 80%. What do I mean by that? Okay. Well, you hire cops at one per thousand, right? You have to have a police officer for every thousand people. There's no number like that for commercial because you've already paid for all the police officers. Right? There are some response, but I don't need to get new cops for building a Winco.
Right, 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 right.
But that building now, I get development prop, you know, the property tax.
You get all the benefit of it.
I get all the benefit with none of the money going out. Caldwell's incredibly behind in commercial. Right? We are a bedroom community. We're almost all rooftops. When you look at the balance between the two, we're getting better. Up on 2026, North Ranch, a couple of areas, we're starting to, we're just now getting a Home Depot. Looks like we might get a Winco and stuff like that down the road. But we're way behind when we're the fourth largest city. And a lot of it is when you deal with developers, I know this just from being in the industry for years. If you give somebody the option of residential or commercial, they'll choose residential every time. Why? Because my ROI, I can turn residential faster than I can turn commercial. Commercial, I build the lot and I hope somebody will come.
Right.
Residential, I can build the houses, rent them out, do whatever. And you almost know you're, you're going to get a return on your investment. So everyone always leans towards commercial or towards residential. That's where as a council, we almost need to force the commercial. But then everyone goes, well, why do you give benefits to, you know, you're giving all these benefit, uh, tax benefits or tax breaks to businesses? Well, yeah, you want the businesses because I want that tax base. But if Eagle or Boise is also bidding for that same commercial and they're giving benefits and I'm not, they're going to go where the benefits are at. And my residential pays for itself for the first couple of years. It's long-term. It doesn't.
Right.
So if I give the benefit for commercial upfront, but I'm getting all the benefits in the backend, it covers the residential in the crossover. Right? So once residential stops paying for itself, because now my impact fees have been used, right? My inflation's gone up, cost me more to hire people. Right? To fill those firemen in the fire station.
Right.
I now, my commercial kicks in and starts paying for that.
Right.
That's the balance people are missing.
Okay.
So they're not thinking about long-term. They're looking at right now. My roads suck right now.
Right.
Great. But who's going to fix them? I can raise everybody's taxes and fix them now, but even then I can't raise your taxes and fix them because the state says I can only raise taxes a certain percentage. My budget can only go up 3% a year.
Right. You guys have a highway district, right?
We have, in Canyon County, we have four.
Okay. So do, does the city?
The city, the city, we, we have fire, police, city streets.
Okay, okay.
And so unlike.
Uh, some other places.
Yeah. Star, or I want to say Star is all, all highway district.
Yeah, ADHD.
Right. Um, I know Kuna contracts with the sheriff's department for police, so they don't have police.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, yeah.
So you have different districts. Yeah.
We're one of the few that has all of it.
Gotcha.
Because even Nampa is now, they don't have fire. They have a fire district.
Gotcha. So you guys do fire, you do police, you have roads, you have parks and rec.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. One, one thing that I think is interesting, not, not many people have brought up the nature of tax revenue for commercial. But as you're pointing out, you gotta have businesses that are game to take that commercial. Now you obviously have opportunities as a builder to say, hey, I'll build to suit this. So I have this lot. And hey, Home Depot, or hey, you know, Winco, if I build here, will you sign a rental agreement ahead of time and I'll get going on this? But you gotta take that, you, you gotta get that interest. So how do you interest more businesses in coming into Caldwell? Yeah, we can interest, we can obviously bring interest of developers for a number of different ways. But how do you get the businesses, both big box stores and, you know, smaller mom and pop? How do you attract those into the area?
Because commercial will like commercial. So where am I going? Well, we're developing this area to be more commercial. So perfect example, I am not a big fan of urban renewal. It's just an additional tax and I think the state laws are a little too broad. I have issues with the state laws on the way it's interpreted, things like that.
Sure.
But it serves a purpose in some areas. So Caldwell, for example, we used urban renewal downtown, Indian Creek. That was developed as a commercial area.
Sure.
So you can start turning to people and going, okay, we have this commercial area. We will give you tax breaks for the first two years. Right? Will allow you to get started, get your foot in the door. If you come in, then year three, you're back on the tax rolls.
Right.
Well, if they can get started and get their foot in the door, that brings in more commercial because now that business, you know, like I've always said, commercial likes commercial.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to DMB to grab something and then, oh yeah, there's a burger place across the street.
Right.
Or Riley's right next to you. Or whatever. Right. So commercial likes commercial. The more you can build, the more that will come in. But you have to, you also have to have that in your plan as these areas are locked in. And then do all of your infrastructure in your impact fees and stuff like that. And that's where urban renewal can help is in those large areas. But you don't even need urban renewal to do smaller corridors. Okay. Down this road, we're going to focus most of it on commercial. So be Ustick or whether it be the boulevard. It's a perfect example of an area where it's all commercial. So how can we give incentives? What are the businesses looking for? And it isn't always tax breaks. Sometimes it's advertising. Sometimes it's, there's all different kinds of things. And that's where having the right. There's all different kinds of things. And that's where having the right people in place from the city standpoint, managers and stuff like that, that can look at businesses and say, hey, come in, what, what can we do to help you come into our location?
Right, that aspect
Get that benefit long term.
Yeah, and that aspect of certainty, where it's like, this is designated, this is the plan, this is where we're going. I've had, I have a friend who owned this large, um, uh, commercial spot in this, you know, town. And it used to be like a department store and he didn't, like he, department stores were dead, right? And he at one point had, um, uh, Bevmo Beverages and More that was interested in renting it, signing a rental agreement, right? And it was something, it was like August or something like that. And he was about to get the lease signed. He was so pumped. He was like, yes, this is going to be great. And he was, you know, this was like his biggest asset that he had somehow, you know, over thirty years of, of investing, he had come by this asset. And he was like, this is going to be great. And the city told, you know, just nonchalantly told the Bevmo reps, they're like, oh yeah, we're tearing up that whole area. Uh, the whole area from like October to November, and the end of November, we're going to tear up that street in front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
And Bevmo, of course, is like, wait, what? Like, we were fine with the street. Why are you trying to like, oh, well, we're doing some stuff. And they lost the whole deal because they're like, wait a minute, we don't, first off, we don't know what's going on with this area anymore. Second, like we make, we make the bulk of our money in the last three months of the year with, with, uh, you know, holidays and stuff. So this is huge thing. And again, because that uncertainty and the obvious like, okay, well, you're tearing it up. And then like, we don't know what the downtown is going to be now anymore. That drove away interest. So to your point, like, no, 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 this is what the infrastructure is. This is what the roads are. This is what, this is what we're zoning this area for. So like you can have confidence and especially if you get a big magnet store like Winco or something, then all the commercial likes commercial. All the little, you know, burger places, car washes, you know, coffee shops, all that stuff starts coming in. So that it becomes kind of a Mecca.
Now, one of the biggest, and this is a perfect example, so one of the biggest issues right now, everybody was up in arms over, was the new hotel that came in.
Hmm. Oh, yeah. We got to talk about parking, parking meters, hotel, the whole thing.
All of these are things that I'm on record, because I actually spoke at city council meetings in opposition to most all of this. Here's the deal. Now, we were talking about commercials, so you know, the hotels, from a money standpoint. Yeah, you want that. I mean, huge impact feed, you get tons of money from impact fees, the development, um, taxes on the developed property, great. I was even the first one to speak out, didn't like the location. There was other locations that could have been used for that. I had my own opinions on what I thought that could be used for. It was a dead piece of city land that wasn't making any money for the city. Um, I think it could have been used better. But that's all wishful thinking now. Doesn't matter. But that's a perfect example of, we need that, just not there. That's some, the inverse. Okay, the city didn't think that, that, most of the people in the city did not think that that was the best place for it. They liked it better because the college was right there. It's downtown. Hotels have changed their business model, right? They want to be more local. They don't want to have, people have to drive places. They want to be where the
You walk down, downstairs and you go to whatever.
Especially boutique hotels.
Yes.
But could have been done right across the railroad tracks. We had a big parking lot, but we just put apart, we just paved that for a hundred and twenty thousand. Oh, my God, we'll make that in the first ten doors.
Right.
In impact fees. Okay, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
There was other locations that could have gone. That was my point on that. Parking meters. I understand, I understood why they were trying to do that. Napa kind of messed up. They were the model that was used. They built that big parking garage right next to their library. Charged for parking, but everything around it was free. Nobody ever parked in the parking garage. Cause all the parking on the street was free. So they were like, everybody needs parking. We want to build a parking garage. And they've had people come in and talk in workshops and I was at all the workshops and saw everything being, that's kind of my ballpark. Cause I do large civil structural. So I'm like, yep, I know how, how much these cost and what it, you know, takes to maintain them, things like that. They were like, okay, well, we need to, you know, if we're going to do this, we need a way to pay for it and to push people into the parking garage. And to rotate the parking downtown because it's mainly all the employees that are parking downtown. Taking it up for the people trying to shop. I understood all the arguments. But then they just said, okay, we're doing it. And everybody was like, okay, this isn't really the way you want to do it. You want to, you know, can we look at doing some different things? And it just got rammed through and it fell apart. And I was one of the first ones to speak out. No, you don't really want to do it this way. There's also a lot of upset people, urban renewal. Right? Anybody who's lived there for more than five years, paid to put Indian Creek in through urban renewal. How about letting them park for free? We just paid to put it all in and now you want us to pay to go down and enjoy it? We want the money from the people coming in, not the locals. Right? I had a bunch of friends who used to take their kids down all the time. Well, now I gotta pay to go down there? I'm not going to go down. Okay, it was a huge deterrent. A lot of businesses saw huge drops. Well, yeah, because the locals weren't coming in during the week. We were trying to get, the city wanted to get the money from all the out of towners coming in for the Christmas festival or for all of these other events. But you killed it with getting rid of all the locals because the locals didn't want to pay. We just paid to build the thing. Why didn't, I kept trying to ask, why aren't we doing something where people from Caldwell don't pay to go down there?
Gotcha.
But they wouldn't even entertain it.
Are there other, um, are there other ideas that you would have to capture? Because essentially you have out of towners come in and you get the economic benefit of them coming in, right? So they're going to restaurants, they're going to events, whatever it is. So you get that economic benefit, but the idea is, we could probably get a little bit more. We could probably squeeze like an extra five dollars out of people coming in. Okay.
How much are you going to destroy it squeezing the extra five bucks up?
No, and that's my point, what I'm saying is
Unintended consequences are what you really need to kind of look at.
Right. Are there other mechanisms you could see to get that? And I'm just making up the number, like the five dollar delta for people coming in. It's like, okay, they're already coming in to do these things, but is there a way? We could just capture a little bit more.
And I'm sure there are, but the problem is weighing, like I said, the unintended consequences. So do we really want to bring these in? Do we not? Do you know what I mean? When you're looking at that, you need to look long term and you need to find that middle ground. Do we give up the five dollars? To keep the locals coming in and keep the day to day operations doing better, right? Or is it worth the five bucks and we maybe make a concession somewhere for the local
Sure.
People that doesn't happen and now we can capture.
How about, how about don't deter the locals from coming in at all ever? And just figure, you know what it's like? It's like the grocery tax. It's like, if you could get, if you could set up a tax, so it's like, you get like a refund or something at the end of, like we get now, like you get a refund for the grocery tax if you live in Idaho. And the idea is, no, 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 we just capture the grocery tax off everybody who doesn't file taxes in Idaho. Be they legal, illegal, here on vacation, birthday, Jesus's birthday, like any birthday you want. You know, like you got people coming in for Christmas. It's like, yeah, great.
And I'm not a big If I had, if I were, my perfect world, we wouldn't have property tax because I'm nothing more than a glorified renter. I can't stand property tax.
Can I ask you something?
But it's the mechanism we have right now, so we have to work within the law.
Right.
My biggest thing is, people always ask me, well, where do you stand? Okay. God, constitution and law. Those are the three things that I base everything off of. Okay. Has to be constitutional, right? My moral guidance comes from God. That's where I'm based. Constitution gives me what rights are. So if you buy a piece of property and here's what people don't understand, your impact fees, all of these things. You wanted to build that loft for your wrestling and all of that, right? Okay. That could have been considered a development.
I know.
And you could have been assessed an impact fee.
Yeah.
You, at that point, became a developer. Everybody uses that as a negative term, but the point is they're landowners. So you still have to treat them that way and they still have rights, right? Now it's what can we do within the law? So one of the big things was, um, moratoriums. We need to just stop everything and let everything catch up. Well, it doesn't really work that way because you still need something. My son would like to have a house to live in. And if we shut everything down, we're actually hurting more people than we're helping, right? Because nobody's going to buy land if you can't develop on it. So the farmer who's trying to get out of farming can't sell his land. Right? And that's what he was using for retirement. The other problem is, what most people don't realize is by law, you can only put a moratorium in for a year.
Right. You don't even have that much time.
Doesn't even really do anything. I've actually had people online tell me, oh, well, you're against moratoriums. I won't vote for you. Okay. Sorry, I'm not going to change where I'm coming from because that's the law.
Right.
You can't, I mean, it, it's there for emergencies.
Right. And you have to declare what the specific emergency, it's like, okay.
Specific reason, there's an
We had an emergency sewer line break and now we're in an emergency, I need six months, stop building, we need to dress this. But if you just say, hey, and there are too many people.
I'm going to give you the numbers. It's law. So if anybody wants to look it up, it's titles sixty-seven and just about everything comes out of sixty-seven. But it's, um, sixty-seven, sixty-five, twenty-three and sixty-five, twenty-four. Those are your two moratorium laws. One of them is your general moratorium can only be for a year. The other one I would say is only like a hundred and eighty-two days.
Yeah, it's, it's like
The emergency one. And you can only do that
Yeah, yeah.
Once every year. It has to be twelve months between doing them.
Yeah, and you have to have a reason.
Right. And so they're costly, they're out of, they're just, they're dumb.
How, how frequently can you do the general moratorium?
I want to say you can only do it
Like once in a
I don't think there's
Timeframe or
Or something. I, I haven't
Gotcha.
I don't have
Cause it wouldn't make sense that you're like, well, I can declare moratorium for a year, every single year. Cause then in effect, you have like a forever moratorium, right?
And even then, those aren't, they don't do anything for you.
Right.
They hurt more people than they help. They artificially, what happened in COVID, I was just talking about it. The second, everybody decided to start moving, they artificially inflated the cost of housing. Because people with cash started moving in, they were offering two to three times what the asking price was. They drove the price of housing up. And same problem with impact fees. Every, I've actually had people tell me, oh, well, we should be charging everything to the developer. Okay, you do realize that that just goes on to the price of the house.
Right.
And used home prices chase new home prices. So if your new home now costs two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars a square foot. Your used home price is going to be two twenty to two fifty, right? It's all slightly less, but it's always going to chase that number, right? Cause that's your assessed value.
Right.
Well, if you're artificially jacking up the price of everything. Now, you know, your taxes may go down, but your taxes actually go up because your assessed value went up. So the dollar amount you're paying actually went up, right?
And it, does it work that way?
It's on, it's on your mill rate. It's on your mill rate.
No, I know, but the mill levy rate is determined on what the budget actually
Creates, correct. And you can only go up three percent in your budget.
Right. So my, like in my former state, right, that shall not be named, if your assessed value went up, you just paid more. And it didn't matter how many people lived there, didn't matter what the budget was, they assessed your value. But if everybody's value goes up and you keep the same number of houses, your property tax doesn't go up. Because your property tax is only determined by what the actual budget is, right? So if you have a ten percent increase in housing and you only have a, uh, increase in number of houses. And you only have a three percent increase in the budget, your property tax will actually go down.
Correct.
Cause you have more people paying. So the assessment value is like a very nebulous metric.
It's a, yeah, it's a zoo and I'm not going to sit here and say I'm an accountant and know all
Sure, 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 sure.
But all I do know is, is when you start jacking up your assessed rate. Now you're, people can't, my kid can't buy a house, your kids can't buy a house. It's now out of control.
Right.
Um, you will start taxing people out of their homes. I worked with a senator trying to come up with a similar to Prop thirteen type bill that didn't have all of the negatives of thirteen. Where basically you got locked in it when you bought your home. To me, that was a better pri- plan because then new homes would pay for themselves, right? You would have a higher tax bill. The problem is, is we ran into some issues.
With the constitution.
I'm saying that everybody has to be
Yeah, all properties should be treated equally.
And we still think it would have passed muster because they were, I mean, never met the floor, never got out on the floor. But these were things that as a detailer, I enjoy doing. I enjoy getting into the, you know, playing devil's advocate. Okay, well, what happens if we do this? What happens if we do that? What's the unintended consequence?
Yeah.
I've been working with a ton, talking with a ton of different councilmen from different areas. So from Kuna, from Middleton.
Sure.
Um, looking at what codes have worked? What things have you done? What things can't you do? Some of the ways people always ask, well, then how are we going to control building? Okay, well the state law allows us mitigating factors. We can take into consideration things like schools or sewers or whatever, right? Things that your development would impact.
Yeah, as Middleton has done.
But it has to be written in code. Because everybody has to play by the same rules. You can't just make rules up, right? This is the way I always look at it.
You can't apply it to one developer and not to the other.
Correct. And that's why it has to be in code. Well, to get that code passed, you need four councilmen. So yelling and screaming at each other isn't going to help either. And Caldwell has slowly devolved into that. Decorum is one of the things that we need to bring back.
God bless.
We actually need to talk to each other. I am so tired of people not talking. It's one of the things I love about like this podcast that I've seen. You've talked to people from all, all the spectrum.
Of course.
And you know what? I want to hear from all of them. Do I agree with them?
No.
But I can, I can create a better argument against them if I understand where they're coming from. And I've been able to sway some of them. I've actually had councilmen mention me by name going, yeah, I understood what Mr. Tomat wanted and, you know, but I just, I, not quite yet. Okay, hey, at least he's listening. Right. At least I'm working. I'm getting him to come my way a little bit more.
And you probably didn't just start by saying, you're such an idiot, you don't understand.
I, you got to work with it. And I, like I said, I've been at this for three and a half years. I ran two years ago. I sit on the impact fee committee. I'm, I work with, you know, all kinds of things. I've seen the good, I've seen the bad. I've seen some of the stuff that I'm like, why are we doing this? And I've asked, I, I'm, I have three and a half years of recorded testimony. This isn't me just blowing sunshine. I, it's recorded. My position hasn't changed. I'm still the same person. Do I think we need to do it legally and correctly? Yes.
Yeah, let's start with doing it legally and correctly.
Just burning it all down or we gotta stop it all, or we need a bumper sticker is not going to do it.
Could I, could I ask you a, a specific question?
Sure.
Um, and again, I really appreciate everything you're saying, a hundred percent. Um, so hit the parking meters, the hotel. Uh, downtown, economic growth, kind of mitigating, mitigating growth or plans for addressing that. Tell me about emergency services. What do you think about current state of law enforcement in Caldwell?
Okay, I'll be honest. Um.
Yeah, please be honest.
I'm, I'm just, I have a hard time with this because I've been here half my life. I've been in Caldwell half my life. I moved up here when I was, what, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight? I'm fifty-five. Um, I've seen the bad. We went through some tough years. We're still dealing with some federal investig- investigations and you know, court cases on all of that. Do I know all the ins and outs? No. Do I think that we're going in a good direction? Yeah, because I have a lot of interactions with police. Um, patrol wise, I think we're doing better. Um, we're behind. Um, I know a lot of, because I see them all the time at council meetings. I go by what people tell me. I see lawsuits thrown around all the time, right? Accusations. We've all seen them. Through the whole Me Too movement and everything else. I don't disbelieve, but I don't believe either side. I want to see it come out.
Sure.
One of the things that I'm really frustrated on, and I've talked to some of the council members on it, and I would love to see us see if we can't renegotiate our contract with the insurance company or whatnot. Right now, the city insurance will just pay off, i- it's easier to just pay off a lawsuit than it is to actually fight it. And all too, all too often, government entities do that. It's just cheaper to pay it than to litigate it.
Cause there's no, there's no fighting it in principle. It's like, no, no, no. If that's a hundred and that is two hundred, go for the one hundred.
Right. And unfortunately, that almost, okay, well then they must be guilty.
Oh, sure. It seems like
Okay, but I don't know. And I don't know. So where do I stand right now? I, I think what we're doing, what I see out in the public. But the, the interactions I've had with the officers, the interactions I'm having with our fire personnel, stuff like that, great. Do I know what they're doing behind closed doors? No, not a cop. I don't know. I, and do I think that some of these probably have merit? Maybe. It sounds like a really bad answer, but I'm at a point where I watched the Duke Lacrosse team get totally buried. And I was totally on that. I said, okay, it went through court and went through court of law. They were found guilty. I believed they were guilty. What was it about a year ago? The person who accused them came out after she had already been put in jail for something else. It was like, oh yeah, I The person who accused them came out after she had already been put in jail for something else. It was like, oh yeah, I totally made that up. I'm not saying, this person's making it up. I'm not saying anything of that. And I really want people to know that. I'm not saying that. My problem is I don't know. And so I can only go by what's out there. I think she probably has a case. I think he's probably straight up as well. I don't know. There may have been situations that we don't know about. I don't know. I haven't been in any of the hearings or any of the, you know, executive sessions that tell what's going on and what's not. So I don't know. I can only go by what people have told me. And right now they said, they don't think, they don't think it happened. Or there's the other side of, yep, it all happened. So.
Gotcha.
I don't know.
Um, do you think that we're doing a sufficient job funding or Caldwell funding law enforcement?
Yes.
Do you think that there's a, uh, positive direction that, you know, criminality and prosecution is?
Yes. Because with as fast as we've grown, I came from San Jose, California. That's where I moved up from. Um, wasn't born there, grew up overseas, you know, that just happened to be where I landed. Um, as soon as I could get out, I got out. Um, I've seen the bad. I know what it's like when you're overpopulated and things like that. Is it? Are things happening that didn't happen twenty years ago? Yeah. But then again, downtown Caldwell was a mess twenty years ago. It was considered the armpit of the valley. It just was. It's much better now. Do we still have problems? Yeah. Do we still have gang issues? Yeah. They aren't nearly as bad as they used to be. Now is that because of the current or the one prior to him or whatever? I don't know. Cause I just know over time it's gotten better. And we're sitting pretty good considering that we have almost eighty thousand people in the city. Could it be better? Always. But, and it's never going to be good enough.
Sure. One crime is too many, right? Like it's never going to be, it's never going to be good enough.
Right. I mean, it's just like construction. I always joke with people because I'm in heavy civil structural. So we do roadways, bridges, retaining. All right. We're always the ones out on the freeway that are mucking with everything. I'm in the only industry in the world where everybody in the world is an expert, except the people who actually work in the industry. We're all idiots, right? We're all the ones that are standing. I mean, how many memes do you see? Oh yeah. They're all driving over there now. Let's go tear that road up.
Yeah.
We don't have supporters, right? Everybody hates us. I really feel for police. I'm a retired ice hockey official. I was a cop on ice. Not the same way, and I'm not equating it, but we were basically enforcing rules.
Yeah, yeah.
With guys with weapons. If you've ever been hit with a stick, you know that they're a weapon. Especially if you've been body checked at full speed. That's why I'm missing some of my teeth. Um, yes, I am.
Um, Scott.
Hey, it's hockey. That's what you do.
Um, oh my gosh.
The police have a very hard job because you're reactionary, right? And you can only do so much. You can only be so many places so many times. I love it online when people are like, oh, construction, you know, you need to build, you know, finish one job before you start the next. Okay. Well, if I've got four projects down this road, that means I'm going to have the road torn up over for the time of four projects. Or I can do two of them at the same time. And yes, you have to drive further out of the way, but I get it done faster.
Right.
Which one do you want? You, perfect example, when they tour, this is where a lot of people don't understand and dealing with different highway districts or municipalities, or however you want to say it, um, is a benefit of mine. I T D redid the bridge over Eustick, right? Well, during that process, there was also a bridge over a pioneer irrigation ditch. They were right next to each other, but the access to a business was between those two bridges. So it took twice as long to do that bridge because technically they were doing two bridges, plus they could only do one at a time because you still had to access the business.
Hmm.
Then they couldn't do, they also did the boulevard at the same time. Since that was torn up, they figured, okay, we don't need to go down there. So we can do the boulevard at the same time. And we had ARPA funds. So there was two roundabouts that were further up that were done at the same time. So yes, it was, and I live off of Eustick.
Oh.
Right in the middle of all of this. So it was a zoo for about a year. Okay. But then it was done. Now all of a sudden, just now they came back and they had to widen the one section that's near the railroad tracks for Indian Creek. And everyone's coming up, why didn't they do it at the same time? Well, cause unfortunately a corner of it sits in railroad right away. And the railroad company wouldn't allow them to do it during the time everybody else was doing it because you could only do it on, and basically state trumps or fed trumps everything. So when the federal government came in and said, we're doing the bridge, that's when it's happening. City can't come in and go, well, that's not good timing for us. They don't care. That's when it's getting done. So the city scrambled and did a whole bunch of other things at the same time, but they couldn't do that one project because railroad trumps and said, nope, we're not going to do it. We're not going to let you do it. Okay. So we had to wait. Now we had to close it down again. And everyone's up in arms, but it's like, okay. We finished those projects and now we're doing this one.
Right.
So this is.
Yeah, yeah. This is the game.
This is the game that you play. And so the police are doing the same thing. They're like going, I can't be everywhere. So where are my best places? Now, they are using more, the one thing I'd like about our current administration is that they are focusing more on technology. I can do more with fewer officers. Right? License plate readers, um, shot recorders. So microphones that will pick up gunfire and they can figure out where things are at. They just got approved for more drones. They want to do a command center where they can actually react to things faster by using drones that can get there a lot quicker and almost autonomously fly there. Figure it out. Buzz back. Is it something we need to respond to? Is it not? Can I capture something that's happening? Before officers can actually get there and get eyes on it. These are technologies that need to be limited because I'm a small government guy. I don't like big brother looking at everything. But there are places and times to use it. I think this is a good place. Personally, because I think it helps the police do their job better with fewer people. That also means less tax dollars. So.
Damn man. Yeah. Um, listen, Scott, we've talked about a number of things. I know it's a working day for you. We've been.
No, no, no. We're, you're all good. I just, what you had kind of given me, I'm, I'm here for as long as you need me.
I'm here, man. Well, listen, we've talked about a lot of things. Is there anything we're missing?
No, other than the fact that, you know, like I said, I've, if I was to give myself a pitch right now, it's one of these of, I try to do them by law. I have a whole list of codes I'd like to implement. These are things I've been working on and they're the ways that we can mitigate for, you know, school impact, things like that. Good friend of mine, they actually, her husband ran my Cub Scout packs for a while. Um, she's a trustee on one of the school boards. So I talk about, I talk with her all the time. Okay. How are we impacting schools? What are the things going on? Why? These are connections I have that allow me to come in and say, okay, this is where I think we can do things and do them better.
Right.
Okay. But do them legally better. We have avenues to use. We just have to use them. But then we also have to have the decorum with the other councilmen to actually work and get it done. It can't just be, you're all horrible. Everything's bad. Everything needs to be burnt down. That's not helping anything. And if anything, it's turning people off. I don't want to be that person. I want to be able to sit and talk with anybody. Hey, I may not agree. You may not agree.
Sure.
But where's the middle? Where can we find that middle ground that maybe helps everybody? Because we do live in a representative republic. Okay. When we only have twenty to twenty-five percent turnout on my rural years for elections. And if I get elected, I would be representing upwards of seventy thousand people, almost eighty thousand people. That's a lot of voices. So I'm not just representing the really, really loud ones. I've also got to look at what's kind of the best middle ground for everybody.
Right.
And a lot of people might go, well, that's a squishy political answer. Yes and no.
I mean, it's not inaccurate. You are representing everyone.
People. Yeah. There's a lot of people with different viewpoints. I mean, I know a lot of people who perfect, one of the things that always comes up, public transportation. Well, the city needs to pay for that. Okay. I've also never seen public transportation pay for itself. It's a money pit.
You know, it's interesting. And again, I don't disagree with you, but every mode of transportation is a money pit. There's no, like my car will never pay for itself. Right now I can get benefit out of my car, like airports, airlines are marginally staying business, but that's only because the government pays for essentially the airport, right? Like we have.
To, yeah. And here's the other funny thing is you brought up an airport. People are losing their minds over what's going on out at Caldwell Airport. Well, perfect example, the runway extension, that's been on the books for twenty-five years. Since I moved up here, I knew that that existed. Um, trying to get a tower being a reserve for Boise for all their executive traffic, not commercial, executive. That's all by FAA. The city has nothing to do with that. We're the fourth largest city, so Twin Falls, Coeur d'Alene, Pocatello, all these places with commercial airports are smaller than we are. We don't have that. We have an executive airport. But that also brings in a lot of business. There's a lot of commercial that comes with that. Right? Those hangers all bring in money. The people who are flying in and out, that all brings in money. That's a great way to offset your property tax. Is it going to probably create some inconveniences because the FAA is requiring things? Yes. So here's the deal. We don't do the things that a couple of people don't like. Great. We shut down the whole airport.
Right.
Then we lose all of the financial benefit. Or do we keep the airport open? We gain financial benefit by not having the tax, you know, upping our tax base, everything else, having that income coming in. And we have a couple of inconveniences. This is what I mean by trying to find that middle ground. Where can we find it? What can we do? What are some of the mitigating things that we can do that are cost effective? Right? Public transportation, it's never going to pay for itself. But there's private sectors. So instead of creating a bus system that just does loops that you're constantly using, could we maybe pay for vouchers? And use a Lyft or Uber system. It's already a gig economy.
Yeah, but that, that's the same problem that we run into, right?
But it's not paying for itself. No, but it's more targeted. It costs me a whole lot less to offset a hundred people's travel that really need it. Compared to paying for a bus that just sits and goes around in circles. That costs a whole lot more. Do I think we need both? I personally think there is a balance between the two. And that's what I mean by balance.
Gotcha.
We still need some, right? We still need some of those bugs, but do I need it going everywhere? No. Is that maybe private that can maybe pick up some of that extra? Sure. I don't know. This is where I really like talking with different people, finding out different perspectives, figuring out, okay, where is that? That sweet spot in the middle? That helps the biggest number of people. Cause if I'm going to be representing them, that's who I've got to think about is the biggest number of people.
Gotcha.
Not just this group or that group because they're the loudest or, you know.
Oh yeah. Listen, I, I totally got you. So, um, Scott, I appreciate you, sir. Thank you for coming in today. Thanks for what you're doing, running for Caldwell. It is not a fun business running a campaign. I've never done it. I just talked to everybody. I've never met somebody who's like, this is fantastic. So.
This is horrible.
But we need you. We need people willing to stand up that bring expertise, that bring their issues to the table. So everybody understands.
And it is vicious. And it's the one thing I've learned is that everyone always says, why don't good people run? It's not fun. I'm getting to the point, and I hate to bring it up, but it is kind of timely. I mean, you look at people like Charlie. You look at people that have gone on, you look at the political realm one, like him or hate him. Look at Trump. Look at how much he has been just vilified everywhere. Okay. And I don't care who it is. Both sides, we do it. And until people can come back together and start sitting down and talking and going, okay, I may, this is my position. I'm not going to change it. Like I said, I, my morals come from God and that's my direction.
Sure.
But that doesn't mean that we can't sit down and at least agree on, or find the twenty percent or thirty percent that maybe we do agree on. We may not agree on seventy, eighty percent of things, but that doesn't make you evil. That doesn't make me evil. That doesn't make us totally opposed. Why can't we sit and talk and find those areas we can find common ground on?
Yeah, man.
That's all I've ever wanted to do.
And your call for decorum and civility, I think that is so needed. I had a gal, I've said this a couple of times. I had a gal reach out to me on Instagram about some clips and, you know, we kind of had a small conversation. She said, you know, I gotta be honest, I don't always like your guests, but I, you know, appreciate, you know, the show and all these things. And I wrote her back. I said, yeah, you know what? I don't always like my guests, but you, the viewer and li- or listener, you wouldn't even know that I do or don't like them because I'm interested in having a good conversation. I, I, I don't have to like their ideas, like, but I want to know what the ideas are. And that's where we need to get to where we don't, you know, we, it doesn't have to be like a, oh, Matt dislikes this person or Matt likes this person. It's like, no, man, like we could just be people and I'll take my opinion of people home and it's none of anybody else's business. And we could all function that way. And then have what this, what I try to do, which is a great conversation.
Right. You've had a couple of people on and I happen to see it on Facebook. I didn't know much about your podcast.
Sure, sure.
And I was like, oh, I like that person, you know, starting to listen to what they had to say. And it caught me a couple of, and so I started listening to a couple more that you were doing and then
Sure.
This came up and so I watched even more and I realized, you mentioned a couple of times, you were like, oh, I didn't even realize that or I didn't know that or.
Sure.
Oh, that's that. Okay. And so like even some of my notes I brought, I wanted to make sure that I had the codes written out because it's like, okay, this isn't just me saying, oh, I don't think.
Right.
This can happen. No.
Right.
Here it is.
Right.
If you ever wanted to go back to it, this is where it says that it exists because I'm that kind of a detailed person.
Sure, sure.
But I like the fact that people go, okay, you know, I thought it was this way and it's really not. And you don't know how many times I've come in and since I started doing all this, oh, government should be run this way. You know, I was one of those. Oh, it's all got to be. And I started reading it. I'm like, oh crap, no, it can't be that way.
Can't be. The constitution prevents it or like this prevents it or that prevents it.
And it's like, okay. And so I started working with some of my friends who are legislators. Okay. Can we even adjust this?
Yeah, right.
Well, try getting seventy-four or whatever people up at the house to do anything. Oh yeah. No, that's a disaster, right? And so people have asked me, oh, would you ever want to go somewhere else? Oh God, no. I don't want to be anywhere near that cesspool.
Right.
I think my knowledge, the experience I have, the kinds of things I can offer work best at a local level. This is where I can bring some expertise into something and go, hey, look, this is where we need to do better. Communication. One of the things I will say about Caldwell is they're horrible at communication. They're starting to get a little better. They've always been horrible. And I think just about all government agencies are. It's one of the areas that hopefully they can get better. But it's also because I don't think they really understand a lot of times what they're talking about. This is just a situation that happened. Okay. Why?
Yeah, why?
Ninety percent of people just want the why. If you give them the why, most people will say, oh, okay. And move on with life.
Right.
The problem is when you don't give them the why, the conspiracy is very starter. This, because of this, or somebody's got, you know, somebody's being paid off for it. It's just because this is the situation.
Yeah. I, I spoke with a gal this morning, running for city council of Nampa, and we were talking about transparency within government and how you have executive sessions. And there are a lot of people that call to have executive session involved. Like we should know everything our elected officials are saying. The problem is, the problem is you have the city council and the mayor who may be negotiating a purchase or a contract or something. It's like try negotiating with a car salesman when they know your exact budget, they know your exact high, like I will only pay twenty five, twenty thousand dollars for this car, not a penny more, but tell them I can only afford fifteen. If the car salesman knows that he's like, it's twenty on the money, baby.
I'm going to touch on something that has come up more times. Okay. Everyone says they want an off ramp at Eustick on the freeway. They just built this bridge. They were stupid. Why didn't they put an off ramp in? Okay. First of all, there's a little thing in the federal government that says that in order to put an off ramp on the local municipality, whether it be a city, county, whatever, needs to own all the land. Uh, well, if you look at Eustick, it's got a big irrigation canal on one corner, a private property. Then it's got a, um, storage unit on another corner and then trailer home residential. You can't put an interchange in there. They want to put an interchange in. It's going to be a different type of interchange and I know what it is and I'm not going to go into detail. Some of it's been talked about and I've been able to, I've not been in an executive session, but
Yeah, no problem.
Just deriving from what I've heard and putting pieces together and knowing what I know in my industry, I might going, okay, it's because they need a piece of land. The reason it didn't happen is because they're still missing a piece of land. The second people find out or the person finds out that, oh, they want my land.
Yeah.
Oh yeah. You know, you're talking about a five fold.
Like a five X increase.
You probably don't know, there's a little park. It's called Lions Park in Caldwell.
Okay.
When it all started getting put together and Lions Club had a lot to do with it, which is why it's called that. There was this one piece of property in there. Guy owned that one. Well, now that the parks finally kind of gotten the money and all of that and donations and all that, they went to get that piece of property. Well, of course the guy knows the parks all the way around them. Yeah. He came back with this stupid number of this is what I want for my property. And I was actually at the meeting and the guy was like, yeah, that's what I want for the property. And they were like, okay, yeah, we're not buying it. You can just sit there then. It'll be basically worthless. But this is the problem is people will jack the prices up. Why do you do land swaps? Yeah, I'd like to have a developer have at least a couple of developers. If I'm the city, I'd like to have a couple of developers in my pocket with land that I can do land swaps with. Why? Because when I need that piece of property, they go and try to buy it. Nobody thinks twice. So if I need it for a fire station or if I need it for a police precinct, or I need it for an interchange, or I need it for something else. If the city goes to try to buy it, price goes through. Developer buys it. Nobody's thinking twice.
I've never heard of that. I've never, like, that's makes so much sense.
So perfect example.
CBH, go buy that and I'll trade you.
Perfect example. This is one of the things that, this is why everyone goes, oh, you're just this type. Okay, whatever. I did not agree with the area of the hotel. I did not like that location. One of the other complaints was they're only leasing the land for like $5,000 a year.
Sure.
But okay. I'm still getting the development tax. I'm still getting the impact fees, all of that. Why did we only do a $5,000 lease and not make them buy the land? That's a nice one to have in your pocket for a chunk of land. If they find, if we need something and they can go buy it, I'll now land swap you for it.
Oh, so then whoever's coming in then owns the land. What would be the benefit if you're only getting $5,000 out of it?
The actual taxes every year we develop off of that property is only maybe seven. I, I mean, remember, look at your tax bill. There's two numbers, your land and your development.
But why would somebody take that land? Like, why would CBH swap in and take?
No, no, no. I'm saying the hotel that came in, they're building the hotel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But instead of paying $3 million upfront for a piece of property.
Right.
They're only paying $5,000 a month or.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I'm with you there.
Now they go buy a chunk of property for 25 or 2.5 million or something that the city needs, and I'll swap you for them. Now they own the land that their hotel is sitting on.
Ah, you were swapping with them. I was thinking an outside end. Oh, that makes perfect sense.
So did I like the location? No. Did I want it there? No. Were there benefits? That are in those kinds of, I'm using that as the example of a contract where they actually said, yes, this is a land swap possible piece of land.
That's, and that's a perfect example in my mind, a very nuanced, difficult, like I've never heard of that.
And when I was sitting in the, when I was sitting in the workshops and at the thing, they wouldn't, they went through the whole. Contract that they were looking, you know, the offer to buy it, they were saying this would be a land swap possibility that keyed off in my head.
Yeah. Man.
I don't like the location, but I would like that as a land swap because that's a good priced piece of property that if we need one somewhere for a precinct or a fire department or something else.
You can go to them and say, hey, you want to buy this?
Go buy that.
Yeah.
Swap it for it.
That's great. So Scott, listen, we are out of time. I appreciate you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for coming in. Thanks for what you're doing and good luck with your campaign, sir.
Thank you, sir.